Want to welcome everybody out to Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. We'll get started with Commissioner Mike giving us a leading us in the Pledge of Legions.
Please rise. Repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business will be the confirming the minutes from our last meeting. If there was not present there, has anybody had a chance to review those minutes?
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let that be recorded then. Our first item of business will be a preliminary plat and zoning change. This is a public hearing for DB Industrial. Staff want to... Are you going to present this for us?
Yeah.
Great. Yours, look at you on the spot. It's all good.
Yeah, so this is a preliminary plat and zone change request for an industrial development. This is located just north of the Sun Rock property. It's currently zoned rural residential and the applicant is requesting a change to light industrial. And that just falls in line with the surrounding zoning, which is all industrial and also the general plan designation. So they're planning to divide this property into two industrial lots and they will also have a couple of shared access points on the north and south. And I believe the applicant is here today, so if you want to invite them up.
Applicant, do you want to come up and say anything? Confirm or deny anything that was said?
Nothing really to add. I mean, just a pretty simple zone change and subdivision. So happy to answer any questions if you have any, but hopefully be pretty simple.
Do you know what you're putting on these lots if this happens?
The back lot is actually for our business. We have a general construction business, so we're going to do new office buildings and shops in the back and then we'll sell the front lot. This is the plan.
Any questions for the applicant? I think you're off the hook.
All right. Thanks.
Unless there's some comments, like public comments, I might call you back up. Is anybody here to talk on this item?
I've got a quick question.
Is this... I'm going to close the public hearing.
Oh.
Seeing none on closed public hearing.
There we go. Does this property, is it, is it directly next to the Sun Rock property?
Okay.
Well, it'd be the north side of Sun Rock.
Right.
And what is there now?
It's currently just being used as farm ground. They just have horses there.
Where are the horses and a couple of sheds and stuff have been for a long time?
Yeah. Yeah, so there's nothing really there currently.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we recommend the preliminary plat change for DB Industrial pending findings and conditions.
And zone change.
And zone change.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's been recommended, so this will go next up before the city council when the next they meet. Our next item is a zone change. This is also a public hearing. McDonald's zone change. Somebody want some staff want to...
I'd be happy to. This is a request for a zone change on South Main. If we jump to the next slide, you can see the Juniper Ridge Town Homes under construction directly to the west. The applicant is looking to change the zoning on the property from rural residential to commercial two, which would be consistent with the general plan.
When you say McDonald's, is that the restaurant? Is it somebody's last name?
It is the applicant's last name.
Okay. Do we know what the use, uses they want? Typically with a zone change, we often, I shouldn't say typically, probably more often than not, we know what the use is going to be and there's an applicant with a use for a zone change on. So do we know what the uses are going to be?
Not necessarily. About two-thirds of the property, it's unknown. There is a potential buyer for a third of the property. Staff is comfortable though with the request of commercial in the sense that we would support any location where commercial uses could, could thrive.
We love rumors in our office and doing what we can to spread them, but Mr. McDonald is a property owner here. We're not talking about the restaurant, just to be clear. That's not to say that they couldn't end up there, but that's not what we're talking
Maybe you could give us a little bit about what's around this property on the north and south borders of it.
So south of it is property that's currently in the county, but it is within Salem's annexation policy plan. To the north, we've got some existing large estate residential lots. And then to the east, we've got property that is currently zoned commercial. And then as previously stated, to the west, we have the Juniper Ridge Town Homes going in. And when those were approved, if you recall, we did coordinate some street accesses as far as appropriate locations per the city standards and UDOT standards. And then there also is an easement in place for access to Main Street.
And that's under construction now. They're making the improvements there now.
I was remembering at the time that we may have, I thought we discussed this at that time.
We did.
Yeah. Anyway.
We did discuss that this would be the ideal thing for that corner, you know, that it be commercial and I would imagine that it will probably be the same way on the other three corners when we're done. And it makes sense that, I think Dave makes the point that we don't have a lot of these type of situations where we have an intersection of two fairly large tran, you know, two major roads in the country or in the area, I would say. So it makes sense that this, that we take advantage of that to have commercial at this intersection.
Yeah, commercials obviously isn't important. But we get a car wash on us as well. So the corners there.
That's good. We don't want, we don't want dirty cars in the city.
But, you know, maybe we can touch on something that was raised earlier. We generally don't like to change the zoning of property before we have something that's fairly concrete in front of us. Probably the exception to that is with this zone, the commercial two zone. Having zoning assigned in advance of having somebody, an user interested in that type of thing. My experience can be really, really important part of sending the right signal to retailers and folks like that about the city's expectations and intentions and also just about the entitlement process. They will look at a site more favorably if they feel like there is less red tape, less time involved to get from start to finish and that sort of a thing. So that's probably as much as anything why I think this is the right time to change the zoning for the site. The downside is that...
Dave, can you hear your microphone? People on TV can't hear you and you're spewing forth such wisdom that they want to hear it.
I think I got the important stuff out already. But the only potential downside would be somebody locating something that is permitted in the C2 zone that is a concern. And as I go through the list of permitted uses there, I really don't see much that could be a problem there. So just another thought about the timing of the proposal.
And the southeast and west corners of this intersection will be within Salem's.
Correct.
Jurisdiction, not Spanish Forks.
Is the applicant here and would they like to address the commission?
I don't have a lot to say.
Come with the podium, please. State your name, then say what not a lot you have to say.
My name is Mike McDonald and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I don't have a lot to say that hasn't been already said. I'm just pretty excited. I think I have, I don't have any concrete ideas, but I, I, I think about, you know, what we can do with this intersection quite often. I was part owner on the other side of the intersection as well, so we have some plans that hopefully we can make it pretty nice, so.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant while he's here? Okay. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that wants to speak to this item? Seeing none on closed public hearing. Any commissioners have any comments or questions that we want to discuss?
Nope.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it makes sense to me. I think, like I said earlier, I've, I've had this in my mind. It was something we had discussed quite a while ago. So there's no comments. Joseph?
I'm ready to make motion if you're willing to.
Please do.
Okay. I move the planning commission recommends approval of the McDonald's zone change subject to compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that will also go for the council. Our next order of business is a conditional use permit for T-Mobile cell phone tower.
This request is for an existing tower. The applicant's looking to upgrade the equipment at the base of the tower. That's in the existing enclosure as well as swap out the antenna array. The applicant is not proposing to raise the height or increase quantity as far as co-location on the tower.
Are they expanding the width?
Not substantially.
Okay.
So here you can see the existing, this is a Public Works compound on Canyon Road. Let's go to the next slide. It's within an existing lease area. And if we jump, or actually it was in the staff report, so if you don't mind pulling that up. We took a few pictures if you're not familiar with the area, but we do have some pretty substantial power facility within the compound as well as poles. So over time, this has fit nicely in, into the area. The conditions that we, you see in the staff report, these are a combination of conditions that have been previously applied to the site. Part of the edge does back onto existing residential and so you can see that we do have the limitation of the work hours. The power department is, is all about safety and would like to be notified before work's done so that they can verify that proper clearances are being met. And then the city, anytime we have an update to a cell tower, we usually check to make sure that the lease is current. Any questions for staff on this one?
Does, is this proposal, do we approve that or do you recommend that it be approved through the city council?
As a conditional use permit, the planning commission is the land use authority, so you would, you would take action to approve the conditional use permit with conditions that you see would be mitigating any impacts.
This seems to be a subject that comes up really regularly, at least three or four times a year. And I applaud the, the companies that want to do this because they're upgrading their facilities to allow us better service. I think that at one time we talked a little bit, Dave, about the possibility of staff and DRC being able to just go ahead and approve these. Have we just kind of not thought too much more about that or are we moving towards that? I guess it doesn't take a lot of time here and it's okay that we, we do take it up, but...
We've talked about that as recently as last week with, with our legal staff and I'm on the fence, to be honest. I, I maybe just need to let go. We've had one proposal to expand a telecommunications facility like this in the past several years that I think having it be a conditional use was helpful and gave the city an opportunity to, to talk about conditions that would mitigate some of the anticipated impact that that site had. And all the while, we've probably had 10 or 15 that have been completely innocuous that have probably taken time of the planning commission that we didn't need and so forth. So appreciate the thought. We continue to think about it. I think at one point in recent years, we had language drafted that would change it so that it would be, instead of a conditional use, maybe just a use subject to conditions that wouldn't need to come to the planning commission. How strongly do you guys feel one way or another about the situation here?
Depending on the location, it, it could be really important that we're looking at it and applying conditions, especially when it's next to residential. So like you, I'm on the fence. I could see it either way. And it's not necessarily that easy for the staff to come up with subjective conditions because that's really difficult from a legislative perspective. It's actually probably just better to keep doing it the way it is because it's safer for the city, for the planning commission to be the ones that come up with the conditions if there needs to be conditions. Yeah, I, I see both sides of this.
I appreciate that. And incidentally, I think the only opportunity to come up with site-specific conditions involves somebody other than staff.
Yeah, I agree.
Planning commission or city council where there's a public hearing held and things are, you know, debated in this forum.
I'm glad you brought up the public hearing because I think that's actually really important, especially when these are right next to residences, that there's notice and then we see who's concerned and what the concerns are. That's my thought. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I appreciate it. The last thing I'll mention, just by way of a reminder, is that with conditional use proposals, it's not a matter of whether or not they will be approved. Essentially, they're allowed uses. It's just a matter of what conditions does the land use authority feel are appropriate to impose to address anticipated effects that they might have.
The one you had a concern with, if I'm remembering right, didn't we impose some other work hours on them?
We've done that a few times. Things like that have been common in fact.
And that came up through the public hearing.
Yeah.
The neighbors in that, in that condition or in that instance, they were concerned about those hours. And so I don't recall if before that we had any hour restrictions, but because that was in such a, it's in an older part of town and there were quite a few homes around there and had a couple of people that were concerned about that. And so it's not a big deal that it comes before us. I just, I just recall that we did have that discussion, so.
We still talk about it.
We're good.
And this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public if they may want to voice any opinions on this. Seeing none on closed public hearing. Any further discussion, commissioners? Do I have a motion?
I move the planning commission approves the conditional use permit for the 2505 East T-Mobile cell tower modification, subject to compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay. Our next order of business is the moderate income housing element. And this is also a public hearing.
Yes, please. I'm just going to take a quick minute to introduce this. I really appreciate the work that Ms. Martin has put into this update. I want to kind of set the stage to try to illustrate how important this is for us as the city. I think most of you are aware that we're required to have a document, a plan in place that identifies how Spanish Fork City anticipates and in fact really what we are doing to help increase the supply of moderate income housing in our community. A few years ago, the need for these plans and their importance was ratcheted up considerably by the state legislature when reporting requirements as to our performance, like other cities here in Utah, became pretty stringent and there are penalties for being out of compliance. So I can go back to 2022. We submitted a report. It was the first year that we were following a new format and new requirements with the state. A report that we submit to the state that they review and they identify whether or not we are compliant with provisions in state code that relate directly to what we have in our plan and the city's performance on that plan. In 2022, we were found to be compliant with our submittal there. I think 85% of the cities that submitted their plans initially in 2022 were found to be not compliant. That's, it was a new program, first year, new staff involved at the state level by way of who was reviewing the plans. I think that being said still, when you're among so few that were found to be compliant, we were, we were fortunate in that regard. Incidentally, there is a curing period that cities have if they're found to be non-compliant and the vast majority of cities that were not compliant at that time got things fixed and the majority of us in Utah since have been operating in good standing, so to speak. Fast forward one year to last fall, so we submitted a report for 2023 in July. And to shed a little bit more light on what's required, the state code provides cities with a number of different strategies that we can choose to implement in order to be compliant. Twenty-six, something, seven, or twenty-four? Second, twenty-four, twenty-six. Twenty-four that we can choose from. In our case, as a community that does not have some type of fixed route transit option, that would be bus rapid transit, light rail, commuter rail, we need to pick three strategies and show that we have implemented those. Sounds easy enough, right? You've got 24 to choose from, have to pick three. Now, if you pick five and implement those and get found to be actually doing that, to have five compliant strategies that you've selected, then you qualify for some transportation funding that you otherwise wouldn't qualify for. So we want, we submitted our plan in 2023, so just last summer with seven? Is that right? Submitted with nine. So after being compliant in 2022, we submit with nine. We want five, we need three. We get a letter in the fall after waiting a long time to hear back from the state, longer than I expected, saying we're not compliant. That did not go over well. The letters are delivered. I think we got it at staff the same time that the mayor got it, city council got it, city manager got it. Not the best day for me driving back from a meeting in Sandy where we got the news and just having got off the phone with the city manager who briefed me on our situation there. Anxious to figure out what, what's up. And to make a long story short, at the end of the day, we in fact were compliant and we got a letter shortly after saying we were compliant. We were only compliant with three strategies. We submitted with nine. Found that six of them, or performance on six of them at least, didn't count. And whether I agree with that evaluation or not doesn't matter. We don't get say in that, so. That being said, compliant in 2023, but not in a way that any of us are satisfied with. So this approach is distinct from what we've done in the past. There's been more time and effort put into the plan itself, but I would say equally, if not even more, on the implementation part. Again, give Mary all the credit for what I think really is a solid approach to a couple of things. First of all, us being compliant really is a big deal and we don't want to be compliant by the skin of our teeth. We want to, want to have some headroom there. But then also, we recognize as a community, having talked with our city council just a couple of weeks ago about housing and, and what it means to them and having adequate housing and adequate housing of different types in the community, it's a big deal. So that's, that's real. This is not just about checking a box and satisfying state requirements, but also doing what we can to improve the quality of life through making sure that appropriate housing is found in Spanish Fork. So that all being said, this is an element of the general plan, so public hearing and all of that comes into play. We anticipate getting this in front of the city council soon, like in their next meeting, partly so that we can begin to implement the strategies that I think Mary will talk about here in a moment, right away. We need to report on our performance in July. That clock's ticking, so having a number of months to be able to, to perform and measure is important. Any questions for me before I get out of the way?
Great.
So maybe I'll just talk through a little bit of what we've done with the report, so, or the element. So there was a good foundation. So really what we've done is made updates to some statistics, taken out things that are maybe a little bit redundant or not getting to the point of why we are planning for moderate income housing and then also revamped and been a little bit more intentional with the strategies and implementation plan. So I don't know if you want to just scroll through, Brandon? So really the first part is making updates to statistics and being accurate with our forecasts of population growth and housing growth in Spanish Fork. And then after that, we go into all of the possible strategies that we could have chosen from, so going through all 24 and giving some reasoning behind why or why not we're going to pursue those strategies. And then lastly, with the implementation plan, we've provided very detailed plans with a timeline for each of the chosen strategies, which we have 10 this year. And this was really developed with some direction from state staff as well. So I'm happy to go into any of them if you have questions.
I have a question. So the strategies that you outline here and then the execution of those strategies, I am going to assume, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, that it's definitely taking into account that government doesn't build housing. These are strategies for the government to make it maybe a little bit easier, maybe encourage private growth, that, that type of, that's what we're looking at here?
Yep. So there's one specifically, like the rezoning ones, where obviously we don't control that when applications come in, but it's really giving us the framework to do that and to set us, set ourselves up for reporting on any moderate income housing that is created by any rezone applications that come through. That's just as an example.
But several of the strategies that are selected, like upgrading utilities and infrastructure.
Seen that.
Helps, you know, speed that along to where they can, the developers can provide that housing.
Correct, yeah.
Are we going to go over any of the strategies that the city has selected or?
If you like, we can go through them. Sure.
How do you want to go through those?
So maybe we can go through the ones that we have selected and we'll skip over the ones that we haven't. So strategy A is rezoning for densities necessary to facilitate the production of moderate income housing. So again, we already are doing this as applications come in. Strategy E...
Can I comment on that just a little bit? And I just, I'm wondering, not a critique, I think it's one opinion. The, I think earlier in your report, you stated the, the average price of a home in Spanish Fork is like 405,000 or something like that?
Something around there.
We have, the town homes that are recently selling are, are that or north of that. And yet we have a lot of fatigue from the residents of Spanish Fork for town homes and multifamily. So realistically, how do we, I mean, it's a good strategy to go after, but how do we implement that when there's fatigue on the citizen's side and those prices are already, in many cases, higher than what that median would be? And, and that median price, I don't agree with. If the, if the moderate income level is 75,000 a year and you're buying a home for 450, you're not coming in with a big down payment. You're, you're probably going to have a $200, $2,400 a month payment, which is, you know, a, a too big of a payment. twenty-four hundred dollar a month payment, which is, you know, a, a, a too big of a payment for somebody to be having, making that income. So it's, it's, there's a problem. It's not the city's problem. Or the government's ta- the state's tasked us to help implement it, but I just see that as a, you're banging your head against the wall. They're trying to get that fixed until we can, construction costs and sell prices come down.
And I think the townhome fatigue you mentioned has been overstated. That's my opinion. I think the demand for it is there.
Demand's definitely there in the market, definitely there. It's just existing single-family home residents in the neighborhoods have concerns when it pops up in a development next to them.
Mm-hmm, totally.
Yeah.
And when you do the math like you just did, it makes it really clear what, what the citizens of Spanish Fork can and can't do.
Hence why destroying the math out there.
Yeah, great point, sir. Great point.
I also think that uh, a lot of residents who have kids or grandkids who are trying to get into the housing market are realizing that, you know, the standard three-bedroom home on a quarter of an acre is out of their reach. You know, without having either a, a two-income family or a very high income. And so a lot of the younger population is opting for high density with less room and they still have the toys, but they store them off-site and stuff like that. So there is a demand for them. It's just that it's, it, it, I agree with, with what Joseph was saying, you know, the, uh, the discussion has been, you know, where do they go, you know, and as you go through some of these other things, I'm sure we'll get into that. But some of the things that are coming down the pike, the only way that you get housing that's more affordable is to cut back on some of the things that we worked very hard in Spanish Fork to set the bar high. You know, on what uh, what our, our buildings will look like in the front, you know, and, and what our construction standards are going to be. If you're going to cut very much more than what we are right now, you've gotta start looking at those things. And I know that, you know, there are people in the state that think that the city needs to reduce their costs of building. And about the only cost that the city can really do is their impact fees and their building fees. And if we'd reduce that, we don't have the money to maintain the infrastructure. So where's that balance? It's an easy thing to make the law and it's a harder thing to enforce it or to put it into practice. And I think that's kind of what we're all saying, isn't it? Is how do you, how, how do you meet these goals without?
This is what I, I deal with my work every day. I deal with this and I love that we're trying to address it. I love that you guys are trying to fix it. This is not an us problem. This is a nationwide problem. People can't afford to live right now and it's, I love that we're trying to help it, but we can't fix it. But I think we do our best to do what we can, but two incomes, it's still not getting it done in, in this state right now.
Maybe just to support and kinda share our perspective as staff and um, I, we're involved in conversations about the role that cities play in the cost of housing in Utah, particularly now during a legislative session, every day. And uh, it's a problem that uh, you'd say from the top down, if you wanna start with the governor. Uh, everybody's trying to figure out how to fix and, you know, I appreciate that and Utah market forces mean a lot to us and we understand the role that private industry plays in um, delivering a product to a consumer, which is what housing, of course, really is. Um, I, uh, just back to the fundamental, I think that you pointed out, Chairman Mitchell, we don't build homes. Um, I am seeing cities do things that they didn't do two, three, five, ten years ago, which is to develop programs at the city level to help first-time home buyers buy homes. Um, different things that I didn't think I would see in my life in Utah. Um, approving developments with uh, with deed-restricted units in them, you know, so that they remain rented at a certain rate over time. Uh, things that have been common in other parts of the country for a really long time, we're seeing implemented here. And a lot of those may have their roots in what we're talking about here, these strategies that we've been given by the state to choose from as they're, they're trying to lean on cities so that we're doing everything that we can, at least to, to help with the problem. Um, and I gotta mention this, I don't know if people would disagree, but uh, I, I don't think that, you know, it's really a, a city issue at all. It's simply a supply and demand issue. So you could maybe say that inasmuch as cities are somehow throttling the supply, that, you know, there's, there's something there. At present, there are over ten thousand dwelling units. In fact, I think it's, no, 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 no.
It's thirty thousand short.
It's many tens of thousands of dwelling units that cities along the Wasatch Front have approved in recent years that are vested and ready to be constructed that, you know, for various reasons, the development community has not moved on. Um, and I think now with interest rates going down, that's changing a little bit, but um, I think collectively, cities have done their part. We wanna continue to do that. Um, and I would mention that we understand that our residents are more concerned about growth and how that impacts them and their quality of life than anything else. Traffic's right there and growth and traffic are kindness synonymous. We got results from a citizen survey a couple of weeks ago. It was very clear, townhome fatigue on their part. Very clear, um, with respondents. Um, we're very sensitive to that, so kinda caught in between, right?
Right.
Two things and just trying to do our best, but we do recognize the need to be good actors in this, in this uh, respect.
Speaking of the fatigue, and I think part of the great opportunity that we have when we're updating the general plan is that education outreach. And right here, page two, over seventy-eight percent of our homes in Spanish Fork are single-family detached. I think that's pretty high. And so I think as we um, hear those comments, it's our job to educate and acknowledge that we, we have a large amount of single-family homes.
Education's important, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
I think that that's, that goes to what I said, is that sometimes uh, your personal uh, experiences, especially with children and grandchildren, uh, have a tendency to have an effect on how you think about that as well. You want to see not only your kids and grandkids, but uh, all people need to have a place to live. That's, that's just the fact of the matter. And uh, we're seeing more and more people that need the housing and can't afford it. People are living in rooms in people's homes, you know, uh, adults. You know, they're not, they're not uh, college students and stuff. I'm aware of a number of adults that are just living in a room because that's all they can afford. And so all of these things are important to get out there. And I think as we move forward and we feel that pinch of how, how do my kids and grandkids, my neighbors' kids, the people that I associate with, how do those people that aren't making uh, as good a living as some of us, how do they live? How do they find a place to live? And we're going to have to accept the fact that that means that there's going to be more high-density housing. And uh, so the hard part is, is is how, how do we do that because we don't build the homes? So how do you, how do you attract the investor or the builder who wants to come in here? And he has a s- a, a sight set on what he needs to be able to develop and put all the infrastructure in. And you're gonna tell him that this is all you can, you know, this is the only product you're gonna put in there and it has to be in this particular price range? Well, now you've got a problem with who's gonna build it. And I'm afraid that then, you know, the next step was, well, I guess we will, the, the citizens will. And I, I, I don't think that that flies very well when we start down that road. But we're already seeing that in some places like Salt Lake.
We're not there by way of what we're recommending. And I think Ms. Martin is really anxious to tell you what we do think we can do and we'll see how that measures up.
Sorry, my little segue turned into a.
No, all good thoughts. Uh, yeah, if we're ready, I can.
Please do.
Talk about a few other strategies. Um, okay, so I think next is E. Uh, so this is creating or allowing for and reducing regulations related to ADUs in residential zones. So the city has already done a lot of work to reduce regulations. Um, we've allowed ADUs in most residential zones. We've eliminated impact fees, um, and also allowed ADUs on smaller lot sizes. So in order to kind of promote the ADUs um, for residents and continue this effort, we are talking about um, creating a public outreach campaign. Um, that can be shared with residents to kind of promote the benefits of ADUs and um, what that can mean for moderate income housing. And then F and G are very similar. Um, so it's zoning, rezoning, or amending land use regulations to allow for higher density um, development near transit investment corridors and commercial centers. So a lot of this will be happening with the general plan update and we'll be identifying areas where this is gonna be appropriate. And the next one is J, um, implementing zoning incentives for moderate income housing units. Um, so we have talked about creating a new zoning district, um, a complete neighborhoods overlay that would allow for um, two or three unit residential structures throughout a neighborhood in new developments. Um, and this is actually, we'll be talking about that at the end of the night. Um, O is about partnering with um, the Housing Authority of Utah County. So we see a lot of opportunity um, with partnering with them and maybe getting funding or um, looking at different options for creating new moderate income housing units in Spanish Fork. Um, P is demonstrating the utilization of moderate income housing um, set if, set aside by a redevelopment agency, um, which we already have set up for the city and that's been collecting funds for the last few years and will continue for the next couple of decades. Um, so this will be talking about um, how we're gonna use those funds and um, developing a plan for implementation of new moderate income housing units using um, the redevelopment agency. Next one is Q. Um, again, this will be planned for in the station area plan um, with an HTRZ that will follow state code. And then V, we will actually, so once the front runner station is here, we will be required to comply with V. Um, but as of right now, we are obviously in um, efforts to plan for the station area um, along with a general update, or a general plan update. And then the last one, W, um, this one is also um, creating or allowing for more multifamily residential dwelling units um, within mixed-use or residential zones. So that will also go along with that complete neighborhood zone that I was just talking about, that will allow the two and three unit structures within um, new residential developments. And I believe that's the last of all ten.
I would just add that of the ten, I don't expect us to get credit for all of them. A couple in particular that I think as we report, might be a bit of a challenge to have the state accept. Our hope is certainly to not have fewer than five, like to not be cutting it even that close, but that's, that's part of our thought process as staff.
I have a question for you, Dave, and for some of our commissioners here that are involved with building and, and development. Uh, as we've talked about uh, the light rail or whatever we're going to call it, comes into town and what's going to be required as far as zoning around that, I fully uh, support that. Uh, I wonder how much the city has thought about it. It seems like it's a pretty good idea to go with mixed use anyway in some of these higher-density areas that we're contemplating. Because uh, it provides places where uh, products and services can be had without driving a long distance. Also though, it, it, the question that I have is, would the ability to go up in stories, in other words, to go vertical, is that an option that will reduce the cost of units? In other words, uh, you know, we have a height restriction now on what can be built in Spanish Fork. Obviously, that will probably be, you know, i- it may be changed. I won't say probably. It may be changed in order to accommodate that kind of thing, and I think that the place that would be first to be looked at there would be where the new station would be. But if we're going to go for mixed use, it seems like maybe we could go for uh, some more vertical housing rather than just the three to four stories that we have been seeing so far. Is that something that we're looking at along with these things that we've been talking about? And is that, is that, is that a viable option that reduces the cost of the housing?
Depends on the amount of parking that we require, to answer your question.
It will reduce, it'd reduce costs. It'd depend on the density we'd allow them, parking, there'd be all things that go into it. At the end of the day, the developers are gonna charge the market rate that they can get for that apartment anyway.
Yeah, you're right.
And the state is looking at some funding for uh, parking structures as well, so that's coming down.
And if the market rate for rent can't justify the cost of building.
Then it won't be built.
Then it won't be built, right?
I talked to Michelle uh, last month about uh, there was a, there was a, what did we call it? A, a workshop that was online about parking. And it had an effect on how I've thought about parking. I've been a champion for, you know, the two and a half unit, or two and a half parking stalls per unit and stuff like that. And if you're going to have higher density, there's going to be less, uh, less need for that many parking s- uh, stalls or that much parking. And as you get higher and higher density and smaller and smaller units that are one and two-bedroom, you're probably not going to need that. And I think that along with that, if we're going to discuss those things, parking has to go hand in hand with that and have some kind of a sliding scale.
My only caution to that is where the U- where the transit station's going, I do believe there'll be a a nucleus, a density of a lot of everyday needs will be pretty close, which is a great way to justify the need for less parking. But in other areas, you might actually need more parking.
I agree.
It's, I think it's a location-specific analysis.
I, I.
To me, I see it specifically around the, the transit station.
Yep, me too. That, that should have a different uh, set of guidelines and rules, in my opinion.
Again, it could also trigger some things that aren't anticipated, like I know that some cities that have had uh, higher uh, structures, they're not prepared for fire protect, uh, you know, the, the fire department has to invest in other equipment that will reach those higher, those higher floors and stuff.
Yeah, and they require fire sprinklers and things like that.
Absolutely. Yeah, uh, as they go higher. But, you know, I, I just wonder if that is one of those things that, it's not in this necessarily, but is it something that we should be looking at as well that, you know, maybe we start going up rather than out?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the thought. It sounds to me like it's an appropriate time to consider maybe uh, updating or revising our general plan. You know, kind of that long-range vision for the community and focusing on the area right around a transit stop and maybe as well like the twenty-seven hundred north interchange, which for me, I think has a lot of similar things to offer in terms of maybe opportunities where uh, residents reliance on the automobile could be less and therefore, you know, less need for parking and everything like that. Um, I'd mentioned, shared this in a couple of meetings recently. Uh, there are those two locations. There's kind of the, the Benjamin interchange location, which is different, I think, from the other two, but yet has some similarities. Um, outside of those areas, um, of course, as we're going through our general plan update right now, I don't see great opportunities for like dramatically different land use patterns than what we've had before. Um, but I think focusing on those areas with the idea that, you know, we need to figure out what works in the marketplace and what um, maybe also what's needed to support the kind of investment that we want, UDOT and UTA. to support the kind of investment that we want UDOT and UTA to make to provide services to the community and those types of things. I, I, I hope that that gets a lot of airtime over the course of the next five, six, eight months while we're working on the general plan and a station area plan. I think those are the biggest issues we need to tackle today.
I think that needs to be well thought out in advance so that those guidelines or directives for the developers are what, you're like, just like you said with the previous zoning they had. You're sending a message to people that are going to want to come into that area beforehand, what the city or what the residents of the city are going to want. I mean, we, we recognize the need. We, we know what we have. But we can accomplish that and have it done in a, in a way that doesn't, isn't a detriment to the people that are already here.
Yeah.
I appreciate Todd and, and Joseph's comments about, you know, that it may be cheaper to go up, uh, you know, more stories and, uh, but like Todd said, uh, how do you, how do you regulate what that developer is going to charge for that unit? And of course, the market is going to drive that. I don't know how you take that away from the developer or the builder.
Well, I think we want developers and builders to have every incentive that they possibly can to put their.
We want them to make money and come back.
And it's, I mean, I think, uh, yeah.
And you did mention HTRZs and if the city does ultimately go with HTRZs, there is required low income housing.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
At a certain density as well.
Would they require that like a unit count or like, uh?
It's a percent.
Percentage?
I believe it's 10, 10%?
I think it is.
One, one thought I'm having that you probably already have this plan is once the general plan and those areas have been well vetted, thought through, and there's a plan that there's a, people are supporting, it is really nice if this, when the city is the applicant for the rezone. If you know, for instance, something rural residential and we know we want it C2, um, and you reach out to those landowners to get it zoned correctly, that eliminates a lot of uncertainty for, uh, people who would potentially want to develop it. It's a way to grease the wheels.
I agree. Um, maybe I, well, I would like to, do you care if I just touch on a couple of other things quickly? Um, and I stepped away for a moment, but I don't think Mary went into much depth about the implementation side of this. Um, that for me, in terms of us being able to check one of the boxes, which is compliance with, um, the state requirements and having somebody grade the report that we'll submit and find us compliant, being able to, in each of the next five years that we're planning for here, demonstrate that we've sufficiently implemented the strategies that we've chosen is a really big deal. So this is a little bit of a different approach that we've taken. I, I would say this is kind of what we've taken from best practices that we've seen some other cities do that have been found to be compliant. Um, but, uh, I, I wanted to point this out particularly because we probably will be touching base with the planning commission. We certainly will be with the city council on things that are found here over the course of the next six months as we, uh, work to be able to demonstrate that we've, we've taken the steps that we said we would.
Well, I have a question of, so you, you get graded on this. What, what are the penalties? What is, what's the repercussions?
Lack of funding.
Funding.
But yeah, I, I understand that. But what, what is that funding? What, what are we talking about?
Year one, it's a 100 day fine. Year two, it's a $250 a day, I think, fine. And beyond that, I think it goes up one more time. And I'll double check what that is, but there is, and so that was a new part of this as well in 2022.
What happens if you just don't pay the fine?
My question would be, where does that money go?
City planner goes to jail.
I would guess that it would be funds withheld, you know, from Spanish Fork City.
Right.
We do get funding from the state. Um, that largely is the result of our residents giving money. It's just like federal and state. We give money to the state in various ways and they apportion it and give us our part back. Well, I imagine we just get less of our part back. That's the.
Guess the question is, when they said, oh wait, you, you met your requirements, did they send you a nice apology letter too?
We got a nice one. Okay, it was. Okay. That was a good day.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, uh, so we'd like to open it up to a public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to come and voice any opinions or concerns about this, we'd love to hear. If you could start the podium, state your name and we'd love to hear your comments.
Paul Snyder. I live up by Maple Mountain High School. I've built three homes for myself. I have built probably 10 or 12. Uh, John, I want to disagree with you that people can't live in single family homes. I just sent a letter to Governor Cox. There are so many retired construction workers. They need something to do. A 1,500 square foot home, if you put masonry around the bottom as a wainscot, the brick costs $5,000. The labor is free because there are so many retired construction workers that want something to do. They can't get anything to do. And so I've spent my time finishing my basement. My home appraised for $800,000 when I built it. Six years later, all finished, 7,000 square feet. It appraised for 20, for 2,006 or, uh, let's see.
Two million six?
Two million.
Two, yes. So, yeah, but, uh, I have a medical problem and I get a little nervous.
You're amongst friends.
What's that?
You're amongst friends.
What's that?
You're amongst friends.
Don't be nervous.
Oh, yes, okay. Uh, so 800,000. Now it's worth 2.5 million. In six years, it's increased in value. It is an all masonry home. Stucco is considered a masonry product, the cheapest masonry product you can get. Artificial stone, or we call it phony stone, is plaster. I have gone to a lot of homes that the base of the home has artificial stone and it crumbles and falls off. It gets wet, it will fall off. If you built, and, and another thing, when I first started in contracting, the bank said, we can't, uh, allow you to do home equity. And I says, why not? Because you're not a professional. Well, I have my license. Oh, so they let me do sweat equity. That got me in to our first two homes. A 1,500 square foot home, you could have, uh, volunteers, senior citizens, do a lot of the work. You could have the, you could teach. I created a video series in 1991, Learning the Art of Laying Brick. I've had close to 5 million views. I've taught a lot of people across the country. I've sold them in China. I've sold them, the only place we haven't sold them is in Russia. I, I developed a, a, uh, a stand out of wood. You put two corner poles, you pull your string across and it's so simple. There are, I go to the gym every morning. There are young men in there and I say, you want to learn to lay brick? Not really. They are working in restaurants, making 15, $20 an hour. It takes you about six months to really know what you're doing on my program. People can learn how to do these things. Retired people need something to do and they can do it well. And that's what they need. They were in elders' corner meeting. The biggest problem with retired people is they lewd friends. And they become lonely and they sit down and they get fat and they're not active. We had a program where we could use those retired people. It would help them and it'd help young people get into homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Anybody? Any comments, staff, any, anything else we need to be aware of?
I just, I think they've done a great job trying to, to do what they need to do. And I do appreciate, I'm sure that's a lot of work and I appreciate that.
And will we hear in July or when the state, after we report the feedback that they?
So the deadline for submitting our reporting is August 1st and it took about, I think, two months this year to hear back or this past year. So probably in October, we're here back.
Is there any action required of the commission on this?
General plan amendment.
Yeah, so just recommendation.
Okay.
So would we recommend to the city council?
Yeah, it's recommendation, right?
To approve?
This, is this a new, uh, is this a new portion?
It's an amendment to an existing element of the general plan.
So it's not replacing anything or adding to? We are adding to the general.
Public hearing closed, Todd.
Public hearing is closed, yes.
I'm ready. You guys want to, unless you want to.
Charles asked a question.
Oh, sorry, sir.
So that's all I wanted to know.
The moderate income housing element is already part of the general plan. We're just amending that element. So, does that answer? Okay.
Commissioner Ernst or Michelle?
Michelle. I move to recommend the approval of the amended moderate income housing plan as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No one else? Uh, so it passes. Our last item is just discussion. I don't know, Dave, did you have topics you want to go over with us for this discussion period? Or did we want to discuss the items in our work session? Or what did you have in mind for item eight?
We have some folks here with us tonight to talk about projects. We'd love to go over those. We have some.
Never mind. Sorry, we have five hundred things there.
I would say this, we can skip and should skip the Canyon Court Urban project. We met with the applicant there earlier today in our development review committee meeting and agreed that, uh, we should probably get a couple of other things figured out before we present that. So if we could move on to River Run, I think that
Be great.
would be awesome. Yeah, thank you. And maybe I'll just take a quick minute. You guys are on, by the way, so don't hesitate. Uh, the subject property here, just to orient people, the River Run Townhomes project right now includes this area here and everything to the south of that area down to South Lane. So this over here is River Bottoms Road. This is the new Volunteer Drive that ties into, I might be off a little bit, but over here someplace, Main Street, where now we have the four-way lighted intersection there. Um, Fairgrounds here. So just by way of where we're at, um, hopefully that makes sense. This isn't the first time that we've talked with you about the project. Um, and this is maybe for your benefit as much as anything, kind of some up to the day conversations that we've had or information from them. We're trying to figure out as staff how to make some, we think, needed transportation, road improvements happen just to the southeast of the project here. And, um, uh, today there's a roundabout proposed that would be at the intersection of Volunteer Drive and River Bottoms Road.
So right where River Bottom, right where Volunteer Drive comes into River Bottoms Road?
Exactly, yes.
So this is just north of the new units that are being built now?
Annie's Acres, that one?
Yes, well, it's not Annie A, it, yeah. Then they're going on right now?
Yes.
And this would, uh, and so is your north boundary, the city's property around the, uh, rodeo grounds?
Is there a pioneering agreement for the roundabout?
You know, we're trying to figure that out. It's, it's a unique situation and which incidentally, um, the frontage for both River Bottoms Road and Volunteer Drive that will tie into the roundabout is not property that these folks currently have as part of their project.
Could kind of tell from the map you just showed.
Yeah, it's, okay, thank you.
Makes it a little bit more complex.
You got it. Yeah, so that is another part of it. Um, and I mentioned that we should probably catch up first of all sooner than later. But then also, um, we have some things that we're trying to work out and we're trying to do that quickly. I would love for you guys to give us and the applicant as much feedback as you can tonight on the design so that as we work through issues that aren't necessarily related to the design, when we get those resolved and get, um, everything ready for the next step, which is to have a zone change, uh, sorry, a public hearing for the zone change with you, maybe as soon as in March. And with that, to have a preliminary plat proposal for the layout. Um, we'd like that to go as smoothly as possible. Um, hopefully having already incorporated in whatever feedback you guys have. Does that make sense? And I, maybe not a test run here tonight.
Why'd you mention the roundabout? Do you see it as working through the construction of the roundabout with this particular developer being an important, an important part of getting this approved?
I think potentially, um, how this project gets approved might make it easier to have those things happen. For example, just simply the design of this project and how it would help facilitate the development of what's left of that property next to it. Um, if we can figure out the other issues, that's really important. Um, there will not be access to that property from either Volunteer Drive or River Bottoms Road. So access to that can only come through the subject property here. And honestly, I think we're there on that. I don't feel like applicants, they've been great to work with in that regard. So hopefully at this point, that's just a detail that we work through. But, um, you know, by way of, uh, the layout, number of homes, how things are oriented and that type of a thing, um, these gentlemen are prepared to talk through the proposed amenities and everything like that. Looking to get your feedback just sooner than later tonight.
Something that comes to my mind right away is, uh, the boundary on the, on the right-hand side of this is River Bottoms Road, right? And it seems to me like River Bottoms Road needs widening and some, some improvement, you know, all the way along. And with the additional housing and stuff here, uh, is there any plans to do that by the developer or by the city or by the landowners on both sides to widen that and to, well, I don't know if you need it widened or not, but it definitely needs to be improved. I don't see any place that, the only place that I see going out on there is on the north side of this property out onto, out onto, uh, River Bottoms Road.
That's correct. And, you know, honestly, in part maybe just to be sensitive to your time, um, because I think our engineering folks and the applicant and their engineer will get it right on their frontage and how that gets improved, which is incidentally would involve improving River Bottoms Road along the frontage of, of the project. I think we have our heads around that. Um, and I'm going to be even just more direct and I'm not wanting to tank the well, but. Um, and I'm going to be even just more direct and I'm not wanting to tank the well, but I have some concern about the, the density, not by way of the number, but just, um, the number of homes that are here. That is a derivative of conversations that we've had with you and the city council about other projects. So, kind of want to put our toe in the water on that. And that might be the biggest thing that I wanted to talk through tonight so that we're not stalled out when we come back ready for action here, hopefully soon.
Do we have the previous ones that was put before us like three, four months ago?
I'm sure we can find that, yeah.
Because that, I remember my feeling on that, at first glance, being more favorable than my first glance at this one. And I, I'd just love to see the differences to get a feel for that.
And I'll say, the plan that we're looking at, the, the, the current version, um, I appreciate that the applicant has made some changes that we've requested as staff. Uh, so, take that for what it's worth.
Bring back that view, yeah, that overlay view.
That's not.
That's not the one I'm remembering.
The first.
No, it's not, that's this.
What are the ponds, is that detention pond we're talking about or is that like a scenic pond?
That's a detention pond. And I can introduce the expert on the project and the design, Matt Loveland. He's ready to jump in to action with any, or to respond to any questions that you guys have.
They have a deep bench.
Pardon me?
They have a deep bench.
Very, very qualified, yes. Very capable.
Do you want to come up and talk us through your site plan?
I just want to mention real quick too, one thing that we talked about in DRC which I think Matt's aware of, um, and they plan to do, but it was asked by DRC to do a mid-block connection from their internal road to River Bottoms, which I think we'll break that up a little bit, but it will give you another connection to River, River Bottoms Road, so.
Yes, so, I mean, I guess as a high-level recap, River Run, the west half or left half of this project is approved with the same design of the alley-loaded product that we looked at previously.
All of the west side of Street One?
That is correct. Uh, no, actually, uh, from this boundary over, the left half of the entire project is currently preliminary plat approved with a different design. And we, since that was approved and we acquired River Run, we contracted the Peterson property. And so, that just gave us an opportunity to frankly have a wider canvas than the previous design was designed under. And we also just felt like there was some opportunity to implement, uh, some of the condominiums in addition to just townhomes. And so, that, that's kind of the seed of why we're here tonight, talking about a new plan. So, and I don't know if we're able to pull up the previous. I emailed, um, you guys, just probably about six o'clock tonight, some slides that kind of showed, you know, compare, contrast, if you will. If those are able to be pulled up, that might answer a couple of the questions, um, the commission has.
One minute.
I did, yes, yep.
Coming your way, Mary.
Perfect.
Are those for sale apartments or for rent only?
For sale, yep. So, the, these are for sale condominiums, um, in addition to the townhomes. So, it'll be a, a second product offering. And, I mean, quite timely talking about the, uh, moderate income housing. Like, I mean, if, if we're not getting into too much detail, but I'm happy to answer as many questions as you have. This definitely fits the bill for the problem that you're trying to solve with the prior discussion. Um, talking about with the median houses, I mean, these homes we have planned to sell in the low three hundreds, three hundred thousand range. And so, I mean, this type of product is, will definitely at least, it's not going to solve any of the global problems.
The condos or the towns in the low three hundreds?
The condos.
That's what I thought.
Yep. So, but however, it will, I mean, brings you one step closer to what you're trying to solve, which is get Spanish Fork residents into homes in Spanish Fork that frankly they can afford, so.
What's your price point on the townhomes?
Uh, four hundred.
What's the square footage of the townhomes?
Uh, they range depending on the plan, but it's right around seventeen hundred square feet, so.
Three bed?
Correct, yes, three bed. And then, the condos, there's two.
How many three?
So.
How many one?
No one bedrooms. Uh, I, I think they're actually all two bedrooms. Um, and they're about thirteen hundred square feet. So, and they all also have a one-car garage, um, which is kind of unique for that product. Because a lot of times you don't have that, but we've designed it in a way that there's a designated garage for each unit as well.
Three-story?
Correct, yep, three-story. Um, and we actually, i- if we go to the next slide.
Are some of the garages detached garages, is that why, how you're able to do that?
No, they're actually in the, on the ground floor. And so, we have.
On both sides?
On both sides.
Uh, that makes sense.
No, sorry, on one side.
Only one side is enough to sit, one-car garage for every single?
Yes, we have ten garages on one side that offer the, the single stall for the ten units in each building. So.
Two-story buildings there, right?
The, uh, the condos are three, however, the height of them because of the architecture is two feet higher than what a two-story townhome would be. So, like, talking about massing, it'll feel like a two-story, so.
Until you have to climb the two stories.
Until you do.
Yeah. So, I get winded just walking up the ones, the one flight here.
Yep, we, uh, we design products for a range of lifestyles, I'll just put it that way, so, you know. And so, th- this is what is currently approved right here. The previous plan, um, which we showed you a couple of months ago. The big changes were we did not have a north-south connection road. Uh, it was more kind of like a inlet-in to the community and then all, they just stubbed right into private drives. And so, per the city's request, we continued this connection up north-south. One of the concerns that we had was just, we don't want this to be a drag strip, right? So, we put in some traffic calming measures at the intersection right here to kind of bold down and just make sure people are driving at a respectable speed.
What's the total unit count on the, the one that's approved versus the one you're now proposing?
So, this is.
The sections?
The sections.
The section that were approved, total unit count, versus the same section and what, the number of units you're now proposing?
So, I don't know that off of just a what is in this boundary. I do know that there's seventy units here and we're also.
Seventy total?
Yes.
Approved and including the old concept on the, the other half?
Correct.
Not approved, and now how many?
Uh, so seventy are approved and we, depending on the plan, we're about two hundred and fourteen. So.
But how many are total approved plus concept and now entirely new concept?
So, approved, seventy. The concept would bring in another hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty units, uh, for that, you know, two hundred and teens total unit count. And that, and that's where, so this one is zoned. When we're talking about the zoning that'll be coming forward in a couple of weeks, you know, hopefully in March. Uh, we're just talking about zoning this property. That way we could accommodate this design.
This section that you're proposing, um, how many units per acre?
Uh, so.
Just in that section?
For the whole thing?
Sure, let's do the whole thing then.
Uh, we're eleven point seven five units per acre.
The R three?
Correct, R three. I think another important thing to point out is the amenity. So, we have our pool and clubhouse and the current design is located down here. That's per the previous approved plans and the development agreement. It's frankly in a, it's on a parcel that's probably smaller than this, than this room. It's really tight. And so, one of the things that we tried to do is create a more central location with a much more programmable space, which this design accommodated. So, the, another big push with this new layout versus the approved one right here is we just want a wider canvas to be able to design that amenity. So, um, and then also have it be more in a central location to the overall community as opposed to just in the very southern portion of the overall project, so. Um, which I, I have renderings on the pool and clubhouse as well, if you care to see those, so. So, these are our products, so that's the two-story townhome rear load for all of these. So, all streetscapes, they have front porches facing them. And then the condos for sale are these two. And then the next slide down, this is our proposed clubhouse design as well. Which this type of building would not, we couldn't fit it in the previous plan's location, so. So, we're, we're really excited about this as well, where it'll complement the community architecture quite well. And then to your question on River Bottom, we are improving the curb and gutter along our frontage as well as the half width of road plus ten. So, at least for the stretch from here to here, it's going to be brand new and it's going to look great.
That's good.
So, a- any other feedback? I mean, a- as Dave mentioned, we're, we're just really trying to, I mean, grease the skids and there's kind of two big things. One is, we want to make sure that we're going down the right path because this is a deviation from what was previously approved. The second is, we have thirty homeowners and we're actually going to be closing our first home here shortly. And our residents slash future owners want to know where their pool's going to be at and when it's coming. And so, we, and depending on, you know, obviously which direction we go, there's could, I mean, there's scenario A and B. And we just want to make sure that we are updating them accurately. So, that, those are the two big things that we're trying to draw out of this to know, should we proceed with this, uh, newer design? Does the commission feel that this is in line with the general plan as well as the, uh, frankly, just a better design than what was previously proposed?
I have a question just for, for staff. So, when we typically propose a development, we designate what phase the clubhouse amenities are going to go into.
That was what I said.
This, this developer's changing that or maybe it wasn't specified with that development, I don't know. We usually specify those have to go in one of the first phases. Now, we have homeowners moving in that are wondering where their pool is at. Was that, I mean, is that deferred to the city? They could push it back to a further phase?
Let me go back, just provide a little bit more history. That's probably better, yeah, thank you. These gentlemen have bought both a project that is under construction and a vacant piece of property that's next to it. So, the first phases of the project that they, uh, are buying into have been completed by another builder. And per that, that approval, just like you said, uh, Mr. Mitchell. It's with, I believe, the next phase that right now, we expect to see a clubhouse and pool built. Now, as we've looked at the opportunity to modify the design of that project to incorporate additional land, we felt like there is some value in maybe locating those amenities more centrally in the project, which would mean moving them from where they're planned to be built to a new location.
So, it's beneficial for development overall to move it to the new location?
I, I believe it probably is to get them, like I said, just in a more central place, so. That's at least the thought process that we're following with that, with the approval of the amended preliminary plat for River Run, which would be the expansion of it to include the new acreage and a redesign, design for part of it. There is a phasing plan that would identify what phase then the clubhouse and pool are built in.
So, if this, I know it's in a past development that is already in construction, what will go into the spots where the previous amenities were?
We've discussed pickleball and just to clarify, there are some, so the first phase on the south end, the first phase did include two amenities, one was dog park and then, uh, uh, park with equipment. And then, Matt, I think the plan is to replace the current earmarked spot for the clubhouse with, uh, some pickleball courts, if I recall correctly.
Correct, so we have pickleball courts, a pavilion, and then we also have a, uh, we like to design these outdoor libraries, if you've seen them in like little park strips where it's take a book, leave a book, with, uh, some hammock posts as well. So, it's kind of this quiet reading area on one side and then more the active, uh, area with the pickleball court on the other, so. So, we did, we're definitely not going to leave those blank.
I, I just wondered. I didn't assume you would, that land is.
Yes.
I do appreciate your, uh, thoughts of the pool because in a lot of other projects, when it is put off to another phase of construction, uh, they, you know, the developer comes back and says, well, we don't have enough support to, uh, build the pool and maintain it, so we're not going to do that. And, uh, so, I kind of, uh, I, I like the idea that we've moved that up and make sure that the pool goes in. Or just tell us you're not going to have a pool, put in four more pickleball courts or something, or a basketball court or something. But, you know, don't hang that out there as a, as something that, that is planned. But depending on, you know, what phase it's built in and what the people want at that time.
Yes.
You know, if people are already asking about that, that's a good sign and if you are including that in your next phase, that's even better.
Which we, i- if, and I, I'm getting a sense we are heading in the right direction. But if we weren't, we're prepared to submit the permit with, in its prior location. So, this isn't a, you know, there, there's no bait switch kind of strategy by any stretch, but I acknowledge what you're saying with that.
And at first flush for me, considering the number of units that there already are, that are already constructed.
Yes.
It seems like this is a ton of units in a pretty compact place. There's not a lot of, uh, you know, there are a few areas of green space in there and stuff. Uh, but, uh, you know, it just seems like a lot of units in that area when you combine it with just the rest of River Run. We're not even talking about what's, uh, planned for the rest of Annie's Acres. So, this is really going to be a, a high-density area with pretty much the same kind of construction in it.
Which I'll speak to phasing, the pool, because of its location, will be in the next development phase. So, we, we just completed phase C and B. Phase D, which is the first phase north of Volunteer, the pool is located within that. And, I mean, our, our plan would be to frankly, probably as long as the building department's okay with it, start footings on that as quick as possible. So, i- we would commence construction on it this year, pending approval.
Yeah, okay. Can we go back to the site plan that showed the landscaping that you were? Oh, was it, okay.
Some of the changes that have, yeah. So, so this is what we looked at.
The horse guy?
Couple of months ago. Oh, we still got our horse.
Wasn't there?
Don't worry, we still have our horse.
I was going to say, was this the horse one? I thought it was.
We still have our horse. So, um, a- and that's where you can see this road connection right here now carries through and then, so that kind of changed a couple of different things, as well as we've done, uh, about a half dozen rounds of review with engineering and there were a couple of other things that, uh, through the review process, just had to organically change the site plan, which is what you're seeing.
Looks like you added several of the condo units also. There's, do we have in this one six different buildings of it?
Yes, so we have condos along here for Volunteer.
Go back to the other one for a minute, Brandon, Mary. And this one has.
Well, what you're trying to figure out is what I was asking earlier and I, we didn't, he didn't have an answer, which is the total number of units he showed with the approved and concept portion and then the total number of units he's currently showing.
Before we had six, probably, if there's ten per building.
Yeah, and I just don't know, I don't know the answer.
I don't know if this helps, but the original River Run density is almost identical to what he described.
Correct.
So, like, from that perspective, it's very similar.
Gotcha. Well, I've been analyzing it independent of knowing and just knowing it's eleven point two units per acre is what he said and it being next to Main Street and abutting C two. I, I don't, I'm not seeing a lot of detriment in that type of density where it's located. I think it's a good spot. It's going to be right across the street from the new rec center, it's going to have the ballparks there, it's going to have, I mean, it's, there's a lot of new retail development and housing development going in off of Arrowhead and Main, you have IFA, I mean.
Fairgrounds.
It makes sense to me, the location's pretty good.
This is the part that feels awkward to me, having a, a wall of townhomes along River Bottoms Road. This is the part that feels awkward to me, having a, a wall of townhomes along River Bottoms Road.
But you did say that you've agreed to put another outlet on, onto.
The city's requested.
Unless this body tells me you don't want it, we have agreed to do it, yes. So we, in the next design, this block will be broken up. And somewhere within here, there'll be an additional stub, which will, you know, a facade of five will be broken up into probably four buildings, so.
I think another thing that, you know, when you get your elevations and stuff on those lots, you know, there's a lot of traffic on River Bottoms Road. And we'd like to see, you know, those elevations be broken up a little bit so they don't look like an institution. You know, that they look like a nice place.
Definitely.
And I don't know what you have in mind there, whether you have any, you know, balconies or anything like that that are planned into that. Of course, all that's on down the road, but just a comment.
So these would be the two unit types that we would have along there, so.
So that would, so lower, the lower right one is the?
Lower right and top left, so these.
This is the, this is the, this is the face that the elevation would be facing River Bottoms Road.
That is correct.
The garage is backloading, right?
Yes.
Backload, okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep, so you, you'll have front porches and, I mean, we pride ourselves on not doing sterile institutional design, so. But, so if this is well received, this is what we are proposing, so.
Very good.
So what I'm hearing is the connection to River Bottoms is support for, on that front. Beyond that, is there, I mean, any other feedback that we should consider as we just finalize the last review with staff before coming back?
Amenities get built.
Yeah, and green space, I think.
We will commit to that.
And show us where the horse is.
You'll get your horse. It still has a spot for it, so through the many designs, I tried to keep that the same, so.
We had some added green space up into here that has been lost in the design.
That's what I, that was my first.
And that was a byproduct of the road, right?
Well, and then, you know, this design had a little more green space, a little more broken up area. The new design doesn't seem to have as much, so.
Which total open space, it's actually the same.
Is it the same?
It is. So we have some open space along here within this corridor here as well. It's just, it's in smaller pockets, and where we've, you know, gone through, as mentioned, six different iterations from when we were here last on this, we just haven't updated the landscape plan to reflect it, so.
And actually, more areas may be better.
We, I'm kind of a proponent of it, especially because, I mean, we get the benefit of, I don't know how many millions of dollars you guys spent on the other side of Main Street, but there's a big mass within that park. And so we kind of like the idea of feathering it out throughout the community, so.
Thank you.
Looks good.
Commission, thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Let's talk soon. I can update you on.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Next one, similar subject property here is known as the Sugar Beet Factory. Kind of an iconic site here in town. Thank you, gentlemen, here for that one, of course. Sorry, Matt. I'm slow to recognize you. This is an idea that we started talking about sometime before Christmas. Change of direction. Our general plan identifies this whole property as urban density residential. And plans are proceeding. Work maybe, I should say, is proceeding on the environmental work for a new interchange that would be located probably just to the north of this property, is kind of how I'd describe it. And the idea of having a non-residential use as a big part of the site's development, I think's very interesting. So curious about that. I appreciate Matt being with us here tonight to kind of talk through some of the, the details of that. And for me, of course, with this, we're looking at not only that part, but also how the remaining part could develop residentially. There are some details that we'd have to work through on that relative to the design. But as much as anything, would love to get your thoughts on just the land use part of it. You know, if let's say a third of this site were zoned C two to accommodate what we'll talk about here in a minute, and the remainder zoned R three or R four, I wanna get your thoughts on that. And maybe I'll turn things over to Mr. Gurkey to.
Is urban density allowed for commercials? Is, is that contemplated in the urban density general plan?
No. No. Just the R four.
Yeah, so this project kind of came about with the current landowner. I guess, somebody we know in common brought it to me. I'm one of the owners of the Rush Fundplex, and so it became interesting to us with the new interchange and things going on there that might be a good location for, for a family fund center. And so we started work on the design, and as Dave mentioned, you know, had been talking through some different scenarios, very similar to what you just discussed on the previous project, density and, and designs. And, and we're very flexible and open to that. I think the big item of question is whether we can put the commercial piece with this to bring it all together. It's a, it's a, you know, as we talk about cost of construction and opportunities for that, for us, this was a big deal because we have a landowner that's willing to participate, will bring in the business and participate. And then we also have partnered with a residential developer that will also participate in investing to, to make this happen. So it's a little bit of a unique opportunity for us, you know, to help us in our expansion there, you know. Obviously, they're expensive buildings to, to build. And so we feel like this would be a good location. As Dave mentioned, with the interchange coming off right there, we feel like it fits, fits in really well. Some people get a little bit, you know, concerned about, okay, what does a fund center bring as far as noise and traffic and things like that, and I could tell you, we, we're right up against residential neighborhoods, right up, backed up to one in Syracuse. We do have locations in, you know, more commercial areas like Jordan Landing. But we've had no, no issues, no concerns with, you know, typically for our use, most of our openings are toward the front of the building where the drop off is and things like that. But other than that, with go-kart tracks and things like that, we don't, we don't have openings in the wall, so it, it contains sound and, and activity real, really well inside the building.
Is, is it your location in Orem? Is that your location in Orem?
We have one in the University Place Mall.
And it's all indoor?
It's all indoor. There's nothing outside.
Less noise in the pallet manufacturer?
Yeah, probably.
Maybe you can tell us what's inside.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with your, your business. What, what is?
Yeah, so, uh, I don't know if you're able to put up the website on here, but we offer go-karts, mini golf, bowling, laser tag, we have a foam pit with like a trapeze swing into a rock climbing wall. So just a lot of different, this is our Jordan Landing location, be a very similar, there's University Place, but yes, our Syracuse location's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet right up adjacent to a residential neighborhood.
How many square feet would this one be?
About seventy-five thousand. And that's kind of our, our prototype, that's the same as Jordan Landing. The one in the mall's smaller, that's our smallest one by far.
How tall would this building be?
So we have two different models. The Jordan Landing one's a two-story model, but we're trying to go more to a single-story model. But even the single-story model, it still ends up only being about eight feet shorter than the two-story model.
Still shorter than the existing building that's there.
Yeah, it's about, about twenty-eight to thirty feet tall.
And will you be, are you developing the whole site?
Yes.
Or, okay, so you'll be, and you'll be teaming with, sorry, they got another page up. So you'll be teaming with another developer, you'll be developing this yourself, or part of your JV partners will be doing it, or what?
So I'm, by trade, I'm a jo- uh, commercial general contractor, so, you know, I usually build all of our own fundplexes. I don't have a lot of experience in the residential side, so we are teaming up with another contractor, design-build, who he wanted to be here tonight but couldn't make it, but he'd be taking the lead on the townhomes and the condos.
Okay. My comments on first looking at this, I'm not a big fan of this big sea of parking right there. I, I, we've talked about before, when we looked at this previously, I think when Peg was presenting on this property, this kind of wall of buildings here, I didn't really like that look, if you could break that up, and I, I'd like this, how it's hidden, the parking's hidden behind here, but that, that's a lot of asphalt. And especially when you group it with all of this. I know you gotta get your parking counts up, we have, we went over our parking. I'm beat by my fellow commissioners all the time with that, but I, I don't like how it's all laid out together. So I don't know what could be done about that, but that's one concern I would have. And then what is the, what is the density of, of the, of the residential side?
So it's R, R four, right?
Yeah, um, I don't know the number. That's less than twenty units to the acre. The R four zone would allow for that. Another option would be the R three zone, that would top out at twelve units to the acre. I might ask, just kind of by way of the proposed mix of housing types that we're seeing here with some type of a stacked product on the north of what I think is First South there. No, it's not First South for sure.
Right here.
Can't, whatever, whatever this road is, so yeah, the condos and then side-by-side townhome units on the rest. What does the commission just think about that? High level, does that?
I wanna know what the zoning is around it, because I see single-family homes to the north, so all, all that matters to me.
At the north is actually to the east.
Is the east.
Here, so this is.
Okay, to the east.
Properly oriented, yeah, so. To the east, it's, um, yeah. These are actually, I think, seven or eight thousand square foot lots there, but single-family homes.
How does, how does a fund center type facility fit in with what, what we're looking to have within the radius of the, of our station? That we're likely going just north of here.
That's for us to decide. I will just say that it's not, you know, we, we generally, next to interchanges, would look to have non-residential uses there if somebody's ready to use the property that way. And that's where the idea particularly is interesting to me. So even though we had never thought that that would be necessarily the viable thing in the marketplace.
It is a destination location at least, and it's gonna have amazing visibility, so I mean, I get it.
Yeah, I agree. Great traffic, you know, great traffic counts, uh, coming from two directions. So tho- those pieces are definitely there.
And the residential component is contemplated in our general plan currently, and that?
It is, and, you know, maybe just to talk to kind of the, well, this is how I look at it, so it's one perspective. The existing building and other improvements on the site are not gonna go away cheaply. So to put the property to a new use, you know, almost all other things aside, I think it's gonna require some heft. There's gonna have to be some kind of, just again, I'd say intense land use there to help make things affordable. I think it's partly why for a long time we've expected there to be, and maybe some higher density residential or something like that.
Immense, is that why you're saying that?
I don't know what it's gonna cost us to alone get rid of the smoke stack and haul that off, and that is.
You're talking about above ground, though. Do we know anything about remediation of underground?
Low ground, Todd, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we have done some exploration, the current property owner's done some. Brandon, tell me where I'm wrong on this, but I think we know enough about what's there that we're not terribly alarmed by it. So I don't think it's as much environmental cleanup as it is, uh, just a really, really big brick building. I don't know how thick the concrete floors there are, for example, and stuff like that, but a lot of times, just a massive undertaking.
We, we've got proposals on it.
Call that a Tuesday.
What's that?
I call that a Tuesday.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
I was thinking the same.
Whatever.
Yeah, but that is a good point. One of the, from what I understand from the research that's been done on where the parking lot is to the, I call it the north of the fundplex, that was the one area of environmental concern that would be difficult to build on. But for a parking lot, it serves, it was a good use of, of that end of the property to do it that way.
You know, a lot of that area on the north was used as a beet dump. They would dump a literal mountain of sugar beets on there and, and then process them there, and then later, they still dumped the beets there and loaded them on train cars and took them out. So I don't know how much environmental stuff would be there. The biggest thing, they had a great big vat that had molasses in it. And there would probably be residue from the old, the old sugar factory that was there. And I don't know how much cleanup there would be on the fertilizer end of things, but I don't know. That's a good question.
Maybe, yeah, and those are things that I'm confident that we can work through. We're getting more and more experience with that all the time. Maybe just to try to put a fine point on it. What do you think? Like, if we could work out the design issues on the residential part and come up with, you know, points of access and things like that, which I think would probably be the, the key considerations for the commercial side. I think working through how a building of that size ends up working next to the single-family homes to the east, some things like that. Certainly, if you think it's a non-starter, we don't wanna take any more time with it.
I'm actually okay with it, with the caveats you just said. You, you kind of took the thoughts that I was currently having out of my head and you just vocalized them, and especially that the twelve-plex near the fundplex, a thirty-foot tall fundplex, you might wanna consider some setbacks and design stuff. But I am generally okay with this.
Anybody feel differently, maybe? That's.
What is, what's your expected customers, I'm, I'm wondering about traffic count coming in. What do you, what do you expect that traffic to be? If your business is successful here, what does that traffic count look like each day?
Well, I can tell you that we do as much on a Saturday and Sunday as we do the whole rest of the week. So, you know, those are by far the, the busy days. The evenings are a little bit busier. But you're talking pretty light on your, your typical weeknight. We do a lot of drop-off traffic, so we usually provide a drop-off lane at the front doors, you know, for school buses and, and things like that to come in. I can't, I can't give you the quantity of, of cars, but I mean, on a given weeknight, you know, we've done parking counts because we're usually, you know, that's usually a question that, you know, cities have, is how many parking stalls do we need? So we've gone to our other facilities and done parking studies and counts. And on a typical weeknight, your, your average is only about twenty cars in the parking lot. You get to the weekend and it's a full parking lot, so we usually plan for around a hundred and fifty stalls on, on a weeknight, or a weekend, sorry.
How hours of operation?
Usually close at ten PM on weekdays, twelve PM on weekend, eight PM on Sundays, so. Saturday and Friday are your twelve PM, or twelve AM.
I don't have a lot of heartburn about the height with the, with the single-family homes along that, that east side because if you go along University Parkway where there's all of those businesses that are on the south side of the road behind there, there is masonry walls there, but those are really nice homes for the most part that are behind there. And so I think that that's a doable thing. Thirty feet isn't that, well, it's higher than I would want in my backyard, but.
They have an existing building there that's taller than that already.
That's taller than that now, and so I think it's an improvement, and I think it, I think it's a doable thing.
I guess one of my concerns would be just a, a business being open till midnight on the. I guess one of my concerns would be just a, a business being open till midnight on the weekends with. I'm sure those are busy times too, located right behind that community, that, that's gonna be a change for them that might be a little bit painful. I don't know what the noise level is, or if you get groups of kids hanging out waiting for rides to come up, to pick them up, I, I don't know how that works out, but.
Not typically, all of your entrances are on the side facing the freeway, and so that's where your pickup and drop off would be. Traffic dies down drastically after about ten PM even on the weekends, because most of our sales are three hour passes. So if they're not coming and getting three hours, they're, you know, that's, you know, so most of the traffic coming in is about. Eight, nine o'clock, and then it dies off pretty drastically after that.
The noise will be a lot less than the pallet factory was.
Right along there would justify some sort of masonry wall, even eight foot, frankly.
Wouldn't that be required anyway?
A masonry wall would be required, but it'd probably be six feet, but I think an eight foot one would make sense.
Yeah, I, I think the idea that that space between the east property line and the. Particularly the commercial uses, probably say the same. About, you know, stacked flat residential use, but.
The pickleball course might be noisier than the fun center.
Those aren't quiet, right, they aren't. The noise that would be generated here, I mean, this is a, uh, the way you've built them before, at least, concrete tilt up building.
This'll be a concrete tilt up building, we've done them in CMU, but a- again, I would point to that Syracuse location, it's up against a very nice. Neighborhood and it's been there for now thirteen years, and we've had no problems with it.
It's gonna be the sound of cars.
Just things outside, that's what you said, it's the people waiting, it's cars.
Somebody's muscle. Anybody have any other concerns about like the residential side, or anything like that we wanted?
I, I'd like, I, what you were talking about, just that huge parking lot's a little scary, but I'm sure that can be adjusted.
I would prefer not to.
That's just kind of an ugly space there. There is a spot uh on North Main Street, it's actually in Springville. Down where those apartments are down there that has that large parking lot in the center of those. And it's not very attractive, hard to, hard to make it look better to a, a parking lot that big. I would, I would rather see some breakup of that. But uh, that would depend on how you come up with your final plan and stuff like that. I, I'm not a fan at all of that parking lot.
Okay, yeah, and we're, we're very flexible on that, we can definitely take that to the drawing board and see what we.
You could just reconfigure things there and still maintain your parking.
What are the sizes of these? I don't know, townhomes, it looks like townhomes, what's the square footage?
So they're, they're very similar to what was discussed on the, the previous project.
Seventeen hundred square feet, or eighteen hundred, they said, three bedroom?
I believe so, yeah. The condos are three story. Very similar, I believe they're two, two bedroom condos.
They're basically, they're all two bedroom condos?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Do we, one time, maybe it was in the past, no, I thought there's an extension of the River Trail down through there, but I guess that was what the. When it was another group presenting on it.
Yeah, the trail would extend along the river.
It would with this design also, okay.
Thank you. Hopefully you feel encouraged.
Yeah, no, that's, I think that's what we came here to, to find out, and I appreciate the feedback, and we'll get to work on it.
I'm excited to take my kids to your fun center.
It'll be fun.
One more?
Sure, sure.
Complete neighborhoods as opposed to incomplete neighborhoods, I'm in favor.
Yes, so first of all.
Paid by the hour.
We're trying to fix things and remedy what has been incomplete to start with. It's been a group effort for us in our department, um, I'm gonna let Mary jump in and kinda walk us through. Some of the things that she's put together, but uh, by way of just maybe some history and Spanish Fork to start with. And some things that we'll review here kinda illustrate just exactly what I'm talking about, is maybe fifteen years ago. That we changed our master plan development program. To no longer give developers bonus density, additional homes in their project. If they included different housing types in the project. We used to give developers bonus density for including different types of housing in their product, projects, so instead of just having. All single family homes, if a developer occasionally sprinkled in some twin homes. Or even if they did some townhomes as part of the project, they qualified for bonus density. Um, and for various reasons, that fell out of favor with the city. Not too long after I got here and the program was changed to where that incentive for developers to. To build different housing types was taken off the table and we haven't seen it really done since. Um, for a variety of reasons, we think it makes sense to allow that again, and to try to encourage developers. To build neighborhoods that are, I could say more inclusive, but sometimes that means something different. Than what I'm really talking about, so it's really as simple as trying to come up with a way to give developers a genuine incentive. Genuine in that it works, so that, uh, for example, as we'll see here in a couple of just hypothetical situations. A developer for every twenty five homes, uh, let me say it differently, for every twenty five. Lots for single family homes, they might do two lots for twin homes, for attached units in the neighborhood. There is a book, um, that just kinda summarizes a philosophy that's been discussed a lot. In the last couple of decades that relates to how in much of the United States. It's not, it's not a Utah thing, it's from coast to coast. Um, for decades, there are kinda two parts of the housing spectrum. That we've really focused on and that have been uh, added to. Single family homes on individual lots and apartments, let's just say. So you've got stacked units and you've got single family detached homes and everything in the middle. Compared to what was built maybe like previous to World War Two, um, has largely gone missing. Um, we don't see neighborhoods with a small little corner, fourplex buildings, we don't see. Uh, neighborhoods with other housing types kind of integrated in, catchphrase is the missing middle. We're talking about um, that as something that's deficient in our housing inventory. There is inventory that's available for people that are established and ready for single family homes. And there, and that want that product, and there's inventory for people. That are comfortable living in a more dense kinda urban or garden style kind of an apartment en- environment. But largely, stuff in between is harder to find. Of course, I'm speaking really broadly, but I believe that, I think uh, um, we haven't seen in. Of course, for us, we have seen a glut of townhomes, and I might touch on some numbers from that in a minute. Um, but if you go back, if you go back to when we first started to track building permit numbers nineteen ninety six. It's single family homes almost entirely, to a point that somebody picked up on earlier. Um, and we have other types of housing that's considerably more dense than that. You go from like three units to the acre to ten units to the acre, not much in between. Does that make sense? So, and that generally is regarded as not necessarily being the most healthy way to. Create good neighborhoods, to where there's that much homogeneity in housing stock. Regardless of what the housing stock is, um, exclusively, single family homes on individual lots. That cater generally to people of one particular demographic, which a lot of times also equates to people that are at a very similar point in their lives. Which a lot of times it's, they would acknowledge as well, it's kinda what we want, right, we wanna be with like people much of the time, but. It doesn't give people opportunities to age in place in their neighborhoods, it doesn't give opportunities for. Maybe people that grow up in that neighborhood to stay close to the neighborhood. Um, as they go through different phases of life. Um, what we'll talk about here tonight is a proposal that's a baby step. I think it's, I think it's something that would uh, probably to some degree go unnoticed. And we'd like to bring back a refined version of this next month, maybe as a proposal for adoption. Um, and uh. I don't expect everybody to embrace this uh, equally, but this is best practice. From a land use perspective, land use regulation perspective, I believe, and uh. I'd ask maybe that you hold questions until we just kinda talk it through a little bit more, Mary, do you wanna jump in?
Yeah, um, so this presentation includes a few examples of what Dave's been talking about across the country. Um, and then at the end, I'll show some examples of what's already happened in Spanish Fork. Um, so Daybreak, we all know, um, really big project, but they. Um, kind of regulate their density based on different zones within this master plan community. Um, so they have a neighborhood village and town, um, zones. That each have their own respective densities allowed, and so throughout this community, you'll see. Single family homes, townhomes, multifamily homes, and also condos. So here's just a sample block pulled out from Daybreak, um, and you can see at the bottom there. Um, how all of those housing types are mixed in with each other, and they really don't look that different.
Some of them can easily be mistaken for single family houses.
Exactly, yeah. This one is in Denver, um, it's a little bit smaller, it's a hundred and, just under a hundred and sixty acres. Um, this one's owned mixed use residential, um, and they are uh, regulating heights. And maximum lot coverages, so they don't um, have any density regulations really, or um. Unit type regulations, and they have a mix of single family duplexes and multifamily. So again, sample block, um, you can see similar themes, um, there's townhomes next to a duplex. Um, single family across the street from a triplex, you really can't tell the difference. This one is um, in West Seattle, a little bit smaller than the last one, again, they are um, regulating lot coverages. And then they also have limits on the floor air, floor area ratios. So this one, they have um, like a multifamily complex, and then that's surrounded by a single family. Um, duplexes, different housing types, you can see there's multifamily across the street from a duplex, and again. Um, the styles that they have um, implemented don't show a whole lot of difference between the two. Uh, this one's in Virginia, a little bit smaller than the last one, um, same lot coverage and height limitations. And again, mix of unit types. Sample block, um, so the one in the very center, the single family, that's the one that, um, I think they call out in the. Uh, missing middle housing book, um, so this is that neighborhood that they reference in that book, and you can see how. The unit types are mixed in with each other, and again, the architectural standards are kind of creating a cohesive identity. Um, across unit types. Um, moving to Nebraska, a little bit smaller, fifty acre site, um, so this one, they really. Uh, hold back on the density regulations and more um, regulate the uses. So um, they have to have at least two use types, um, whether that's commercial and residential or otherwise. Um, and they have a large variety of unit types. So sample block here, um, they've got a fourplex that faces the main road, so kind of is like a buffer and transition area. Um, and then inner blocks of single family and duplexes. Um, and then I think this is our last one before moving to Spanish Fork, this one's in Colorado, um, this is one of the smaller. Examples of twenty four acres. Um, so this one is kind of like our master plan development in that each um, community that's planned under their. Planning to development zone has their own individual standards. So centered around a park, they've got a mix of single family and duplexes, and I think this one, um. They kinda have one block of single family and then another block of duplexes and kind of intermix those. So looking at Spanish Fork, um, here's a few examples around town, um, so on the top left, this one is towards. The south of town, but I believe, um, a lot of these are in the R one twelve zone. Um, so you'll see there's duplexes, and then on the bottom right, oh, no, that's duplex two, sorry. Um, but a lot of these are on corner lots, and so one driveway and garage will face one. Um, street front edge and the other will face the other, so you don't, you really don't, um, you're able to tell that it's not a single family home until you turn the corner. Do you wanna keep going, or do you wanna talk through this part?
No, no, absolutely, keep going.
Okay, um, so here's a couple examples of how the overlay zone that Dave was mentioning would. Maybe apply in a new development in Spanish Fork, so this looks at um, six thousand square foot lots on five acres. Which would be the minimum for um, this type of development. So normally you would get five point four three units per acre, but with the density bonus, you can get an additional. Um, two units, I believe, um, so you'd add the point five dwelling units per acre. See if I can zoom in at all.
And maybe, Mary, before we move on even from that to, to the other example. Um, we've actually put together a draft language, and we have an opportunity once a year to spend some time with the city council. I ran that by them with the presentation that, that Mary's walking us through here, and um. In order to qualify, for example, you'd have to have, well, and I'll even take a step further back. Um, the approach that we've taken to create a tool to make some of these things happen. Is a hybrid of our master plan development overlay zone. So we kinda took that framework to start with and have modified it to create a new zoning district. That as Mary has just touched on, and the numbers are something that's in flux, and that's something that. I think we wanna do a few more hypotheticals on before we bring anything forward actually for adoption tonight, just kinda looking to run it by you guys. So FYI, and maybe to get some feedback. Um, if a development, for example, includes a certain number of. Either two or three unit buildings in it, then it could qualify for the bonus density that we're talking about here. We've thought about also having a ceiling by way of maybe percentage on how many units in a development could be. Two or three unit buildings, so that um, it remains predominantly a single family neighborhood. I think a key to pulling this off, and Michelle, you mentioned that how sometimes in neighborhoods where this is done well. The twin homes look like single family homes, same thing with maybe three unit buildings. There's a project, Mary and I drove through it today, called Harvest Park in Mapleton, right next door. They've done a very good job of that, um, and I think there are some fundamentals relative to. How homes are oriented to streets and how street facing elevations are designed that. Really makes that work well, and I think some of those provisions are key. Um, having the attached housing dispersed through the neighborhood like is illustrated here. I think helps a bunch. Uh, you guys probably know better than I do, uh, where the streets are in Spanish Fork, where you can drive. Down the street, and on one side, it's all twin homes, and on the other side, it's all single family homes. That's kind of what we're trying to do a better job of, or would wanna do a better job of in terms of. Trying to make it feel like one cohesive neighborhood, um, and uh. Simply to have some different housing options, um, I didn't really. Explain this maybe the way that I should have, but. Um, I didn't really explain this maybe the way that I should have, but I think this is a really important part. Of uh, not having distinct neighborhoods in a community to where people are maybe recognized by. The development that they live in or the subdivision they live in, rather just as residents of Spanish Fork. Um, I think dispersing housing options like this actually is a really important part of doing that. Um, and uh. I'm gonna say this now just so I don't forget it, I think actually probably the biggest challenge that we would have with this, given the folks that we work with. Most days, production builders, um, for them to be interested in doing this. They're gonna have to get enough density to retool house plans, which as best as I can tell, none of them want to do. Like it is like pulling teeth, moreover, getting them to build more than two or three. Uh, floor plans in a subdivision with forty, fifty, sixty lots or more is like. Pulling teeth, they have their, their best sellers and that's what they want to go with, so. I, I think, uh, it's not a slam dunk that they're gonna sign on and say, oh yeah, let's, let's make this happen. Um, so that's something that I think we need to kind of troubleshoot with some of the folks that we work with often. Um, but uh, yeah, that's just a little bit more, more background than I shared with initially. I think the other example that we have's also good, um, and just like as a starting point. So that we could go through these hypotheticals and kind of get a feel for things, we're suggesting here. That it's just a half a unit per acre bonus density. And that's probably the number that I think is up for massaging the most.
We don't have a lot of developments that would, I mean, most ones we look at are thirty to fifty. But where like the one that Dean's been presenting on down, um, in the Leland area. How would that lay out, like right now, he has the majority of the land is single family. And then he has a section of town homes over by Mary Anderson's house, um, yeah, popular. Um, if that was to be distributed throughout the rest of that development, because it, it's quite large. How would that work out? I mean, would you be able to absorb half those town homes into the single family area? All of them or not even a significant portion of them? How, how would that work out in some way?
Yeah, in the case of that project, and it's kind of a tough one to use as a comparison, because we are talking about two different zoning districts. To make that one happen. Um, uh, Brandon, I would guess that the overall density in that is. Yeah, maybe, maybe the, the part that you're calling town homes, which actually they want to do really small at single family on that part. I know what you're talking about, but my guess is that's probably six or seven units to the acre. Or maybe let's say half of it and the other parts, two units to the acre. So their overall density is probably like four and a half or five units to the acre. If you were to spread that out, the example that we were looking at before, it'd be like R one six density then. You have five, let's just say to the acre, um, if they were to spread that out with a half a unit per acre bonus density, it would look like this.
Right.
To where you wouldn't have any lots at fifteen thousand square feet, like we do down there, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. But this is basically six thousand square foot lots with um, some attached housing integrated on. On some lots in that development. Um, just to maybe use that project as an example though, of what you potentially could do. Like let's say on the part that's zoned R one fifteen, they wanted to somehow incorporate this particular overlay into that. Um, yeah, that's another half a unit per acre on top of the two unit to the acre base. So then for every four acres of development, sorry, for every two acres of development. You could see one additional dwelling unit constructed if they. You know, met the minimum for how many twin homes or threeplexes they had there. Um, I actually think this, for me, employing this in the area from Spanish Fork Parkway. Going east over to the railroad tracks, I think that's where, I mean, we just have all that space. We want big lots there and I think the idea of having incorporated in with big lots, what I think ends up because of the setting being. A little bit higher end, twin homes and that type of a thing, I. I think there's something pretty enticing or attractive about what that ends up being in thirty or forty years.
I think it would be an easier sell for the public to, you know, because when we have. High density in one location, everybody sees that, you know, and they like to complain about that. Where if it's dispersed amongst the neighborhood, and as a matter of fact, a couple of the first examples that Mary showed. Uh, I like the idea of having uh, the mixed look in the neighborhood. You know, you gotta admit that most of our builders now, our developers are building, like you said, they, they generally have about. Four floor plans and they flip them, you know, so then they say, well, there's eight floor plans. You know, and if you want a third car garage, it's another twenty-five thousand bucks, whatever. You know, and there, there's not a lot, I mean, you can look across the rooftops and they're all the same height, they're all the same size lot. And so to throw in a little diversity, I, I think that that's a good thing, it's just a matter of. Would have to change everyone's thinking of how a neighbor's, neighborhood would look.
Part of the beauty of that, in my opinion, is that, you know, at least when we're talking, well. It's not just when we're talking about the first people to move into the neighborhood, but people would always know what's. In the neighborhood, right? It happens from the beginning instead of.
That's true.
You know, whether the property next to them is general plan for high density residential or not.
That's true.
Um, when somebody comes in next door to do a housing type that's different than what they have in their neighborhood, that's when we seem to have the friction. Whereas the, this, you might be buying a single family home next to a twin home lot and you know that when you buy and. Um, I think that helps with some of the, the challenges that we have now about. Um, where density is placed and what that looks like and. Um, I hate to say that this exists in Spanish Fork, um, I've talked with a staff member, I won't say who it is, but uh. He feels like there is a little bit of a us and them sort of a thing that he regrets and I do too. Um, among Spanish Fork residents, the people that are living in town homes, you know.
Did you sit through any of our planning zoning commission meetings on meal scene medals or any of those and you?
There's some reason to believe those sentiments exist, right?
There's, there's some reason to believe that.
And this is one way to deal with that as well, I think in a very healthy manner, but. R one twelve example, Mary, that's kind of, I think, where we wrap up just by way of, you know, how it looks and yeah. I said baby step, I, I would call this that, a baby step. Um, not to be lost is that this is among the strategies or you know, this, this is one way to implement one of the strategies that we'd like to.
Isn't this strategy Jay?
To get credit for, I can't remember which one it is, Mary would know. Um, and I, missing anything, Mary, Brandon, do you, some insights?
I like it, because I just from the one thing you mentioned, you, you, people would know from the beginning.
Yeah.
What there, so there's no, there's no, hey, this is changing on me. I, I have this great house here that I like, I have this great community that I like, I've, I spent a lot of money to be involved in. And all of a sudden I have what is perceived as, you know.
Triplex.
Uh, yeah, or, or, or not the type of people I want to live next to, I guess, the mentality, I don't know what it is, or maybe just a lot more traffic, I guess, in the area.
Yeah.
Um, moving in next to me because the city allowed them to change their zoning, this would be known upfront and, and. And, and there is, and I think it, it helps out the communities a little bit diversified in, in my opinion.
So that's really it, just kind of an FYI, um, kind of icebreaker on the concept, we have work to do.
Is there any way to tie ADUs into some of these new developments too, or?
Um, this would not preclude somebody, at least the way this is written, it wouldn't preclude somebody that has a single family home. On a lot that qualifies, which now it has to be six thousand square feet and you have to have space for parking. Um, from having an ADU in addition to this.
You'd have a detached ADU.
There is another idea that we met with a home builder about, they're doing some work in Utah. Um, but they've built, um, the majority of this product in California. That uh, it's kind of hard to picture, maybe next meeting I'll, I'll bring some images of it, but. It provides an opportunity for somebody to do um, single family homes. In a setting like this and to have space in the form of a condominium unit. That's maybe located like over a detached garage that can also be conveyed separately. Kind of hard maybe to get your head around with just that description. Um, it complicates the administration of the concept quite a bit. But um, truly, if you want to create opportunities for people to start to get some equity and housing. And to create, you know, an entry level kind of housing product for people, um, that is a great way to do it, so we. I've wondered if maybe this is something that, that can be worked into as well.
I have a quick thought on it, just the risk to the developer and landowner who wants to actually do this. Is that they, if they sprinkle in some duplexes and triplexes, they may think. That they're not gonna get top dollar for their single family homes, based on the culture of how subdivisions look. And so my cau- my caution or my advice is if this, this is something we want to have actually happen. The higher the bonus density, the more likely someone will actually take the risk to do this.
Completely agree, yeah, people won't do this out of benevolence, that's just not how it works. It's not for most, um, and I think an important next step for us is to kind of test the water with some folks and. We have enough active projects in the hopper that we can meet with people and say, hey, if we, if this were to be an option now. What would you do or what would it take you to sign on for it? As I think we can get some reliable feedback that way.
It shows if you're selling that twin duplex lot, it's a twin home. Five hundred thousand apiece, that's a million dollars on the lot. As opposed to eight hundred thousand dollars for a single fam- single family home, roughly, just in.
You were talking about just the lot sales, I'm.
I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about the, if they build out the home and then sold the home. So they'd get it, they've got an increased dollar value there, doing this, and if you made the homes bland like they do in daybreak. I, and we have that in a few of our developments like Mary showed, I don't know if those.
You don't think it's, you don't think the perception is that the single family home values are less because of the duplexes and triplexes?
Where, what, I think it was in Mary's development, there's some in Spanish Fork, the top right.
I think I'm, so I agree with you, but my perception is it's in a lower. Square footage of single family home, it's in a lower, it's in a lower end class of housing. As far as lower cost class of housing, so I've seen it in Orem. Uh, where a single family home is around a lot of twin homes, uh, duplexes and they look the same. And I don't see, just think there's much risk there because the single family homes are really small and so are the twin homes. But I don't think you're gonna see, I think the risk increases when it's a third acre lot with a single family home and next door is a. Third acre lot with the, with the duplex, I just don't, it's really risky for the, the, the person who's doing the vertical construction. Depending on the bonus density, but the bonus density is what could alleviate that.
So we have some up on um, thirteen forty east and twelve forty south, that's a very nice. Uh, third acre lot, these are, these are really nice homes up in that area. And there are three or four twin homes duplexes scattered throughout that neighborhood.
What's the size of the single family home lots?
Check, where was that again, Todd?
That's.
You can bring it up?
We're, we're zeroing in on it, I think.
Yeah, it's right there, um. I don't know what the church is up there, but.
Also, I think that particular area of this state, just right off the bat, my initial thought is. People who live in that area are used to living amongst a lot of people, just. That's what you get when you live in that area, you are, you live with a lot, around a lot of people, a lot of traffic, that's what I think.
The people that live in this area are, well, Dr. Porter lives right there, um, there's a lot of.
So what's the size, what's the size of the same family home lots?
Just to the east of the church, yeah, so down. Right there.
Where?
Right here, right here, there's somewhere down here, there's one right here, what are the size of these lots around there? Like right here, these have all got to be a quarter acre.
Well, those are big, is that your development there?
No, it's not my development. Uh, no, I don't live there, my sister used to live here, that's, I'd drive by them all the time.
So what came in first, the big homes or the duplexes next to it?
Came in together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, so what's.
If I remember.
So what is the size of the lots? Okay, and then what, and then how big are the duplex lots?
They're, they're twin homes.
Twin homes.
Which I think you're, would your plan, a twin home would be considered a duplex, or they're, I mean, they're gonna be for rent units, are they?
Go back to the area.
Just as a term of art, they're really distinct, because the duplex is two units on one lot.
Mm-hmm.
A twin home is two units on, two separate.
Would that concept be allowed in what you're talking about, just to?
This is exactly what we're talking about, yeah, probably better dispersed than this.
Right.
For example, the provision that you can't build.
Actually blend in, the way they're built when you're directed this neighborhood, it blends in pretty well.
They're nice.
Todd, I, I, but already I kind of like that, I kind of like that because it's three twin homes in a row. It's not a single family home with twin homes, a single family home with twin homes. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, look how these just spin around in there, how they fit around in the neighborhood.
Yep.
They look.
They look like the rest of the homes is, is what you're saying.
But do you not think that someone would pay less for a single family home next to that twin home? Than a single family home amongst a bunch of twi- single family homes?
I'd be interested, like, when it's just so few like this, I, I'd be interested to find that out, I.
If you know what lot, if you know what lots are designated.
Think there's a way to do it, I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not, that's not what I, I'm, I am saying though. There are situations, I think there are situations where the single family home.
It definitely could be.
There's a perception where the single family home is worth less.
Especially if this looks like vinyl siding and, you know, a rental unit.
There, there you go.
Next to this and that's not gonna, that won't work out, it'd have to be a similar, match to similar in the neighborhood, everything in the neighborhood.
I think that it'd have to be designated, the lots would need to be designated, uh, what would be built there because. Uh, that, when, when you're building a home and you choose your lot, you get to choose what lot you want and what you're, what you'll be next to, to a degree. Uh, when I built my home, I would not have liked to have been next to a duplex and so I live where I do. And if you were to tell me that now someone in, someone could build a duplex, you know. Uh, next to me or in my neighborhood, I wouldn't like it because, because we already have that neighborhood. But when you're talking about a, a, a thirty to fifty unit neighborhood. And you know that there's gonna be some duplexes or whatever interspersed through there. If you know that this lot will have a duplex on it or whatever, then I think that, uh. I think that you know that you're, maybe, maybe what I'm getting at is, is that you may, you may expect to build. For less in there and it will be, it will be worth less. You know, that's your choice to build next to that or in that neighborhood. I wouldn't, I wouldn't force this on into a neighborhood that's already there.
I think it'd be interesting to see what some of the people that you're working with already would, their ideas on that with. But again, like we talked about earlier, I think it'd be the opportunities for the city to set the standard to guide them. Along that, so we, we get a product that we want in that area, not, not like the one, the, the development in Nebraska, I didn't really. That, that looked, I didn't like that one, daybreak is great, and daybreak, daybreak has weathered well.
Very well.
Yeah, so.
I really, I think you're asking the right questions, I really appreciate that, I think we have some avenues to get some answers. Um, as much as I'd call it data that will get just. Um, as much as I'd call it data that we'll get just, you know, by way of. What'll be kind of interviews with folks that we work with, um, we'll put that together and try to tune something up. I'm not interested in adopting a zone that doesn't get used, and that just, nor do I think we want. I I don't think our residents do want to see the nature of single family neighborhoods change dramatically, you know, so it's. Think we're taking a um, a moderate step here, but I appreciate that, thank you, we'll keep working on it. I'll bring it back sooner than later, but we won't bring it back until we think it's ready. Good game.
That's it for us, thank you.
Okay, our next item is my favorite, uh, adjourned, do I have a?
I move, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.